Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We know that these are some hesitant times, but we are thankful and grateful to be here. We have been in there for a while, council, but we're grateful to be here and we are following the compliance as you all may see that we've spread out and even the ones that are here in the audience, we certainly appreciate that. This is the first meeting of November, I am calling the meeting to order. I would like to ask if we can all stand as I do their vacation and remain standing for the pledge. Oh gracious, Heavenly Father, you stated in your word that if we delight ourselves into you, that you will give us the desires of our hearts. And Lord, I pray, and I can only pray that you give this council and myself the desires in our hearts to be able to continue to move our city forward for the right reason that you continue to have the desire in our heart that we show compassion and that you continue to have the desire in our heart that we continue to show love and that we care for each other and that we push each other for the betterment of this community. Because Lord, we are delighting ourselves into you so that this community can continue to prosper, that we in the position that you put us in have those desires. That is not about us, but it's about what we do for others. And Lord, I know I continue to say that the quickest way for any of us to get ahead is to build this community up. And we pray that that desires etch in our hearts, stay in our hearts, that we continue to stay focused on that through obedience, Lord, of this job, that we continue to have the concentration for this job, and Lord, that we may continue to have the dedication to do those things that is pure and wholesome. We ask for your guidance and your purpose, Lord, that we stay on course, tack into the light that you've ordered us to do for the sake of our community. In your son's name we pray, Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen. Pledge, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much again. Thank you all for being here. We will proceed on. We do have some proclamations, presentation of proclamation, but council, as we discussed on yesterday, the presentation that we definitely look forward to, which is one of the best thing we can do is to say thank you to our employees. We are going to table that employee service recognition until the next council meeting, which will be on the seventeenth. And we're doing that because it will be done by Zoom then, and we'll just certainly appreciate that. We have people that are being sensitive to this council and wanted to do it by Zoom instead of being here in person. So we will do that at the next council meeting, which will be on the seventeenth. Now at this time, I'd like to call upon the clerk for the reading of a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day. Mrs. Lee.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us power, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Phoenix City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Eddie Enlow, Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, and on behalf of council, do hereby proclaim this day as Arbor Day in the City of Phoenix City, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Byss? Mr. Pitts here? Come on up, and we're gonna try to do this in compliance. And so, again, I know I probably have said this, but thank you all for your passion for this. I was just reading this morning, early this morning, where, and I don't know whether it's true or not, but I did read this, that when you see shrubs, dried-up shrubs, they were once at a time trees, and that you can water them and cultivate them to bring them back for to make the soil rich. And I also read in the same text that, I think it said eighty-five million tons of paper is used a year in this country, and that comes from trees. So is that correct?
That's right.
Well, that's important, because as you look, we could not be able to do our job if we didn't have paper. And I know Dave talking about going paperless, but that would never happen. So with that being said, on behalf of this council and myself, we truly thank you all for your passion, and it's always a pleasure that we present this proclamation to you all, and would like to ask if you all have some words that you want to say. So it's up to you all, but thank you all again on behalf of this council.
Mr. Mike.
Where is this Mike?
Go ahead. Been at it a long time, Mr. Byss.
Yeah, it's been a long time. We've enjoyed it for years at this service, you know, and it's always been a pleasure to, you know, attend meetings and to learn how to say it, you know, and not only about learning, you know, we've also been able to derive our character, so we look forward to it, to other things that come up in the future. But we've enjoyed it, we look forward to it, and it's just something that's always here that sort of encourages us to continue, really, what we have learned, what we have done. And we appreciate all that's on this, along with us, you know, in various type of situations, and that helps a lot, too.
Thank you all so much.
Mr. Byss.
Appreciate it, appreciate your passion. Mr. Pitts, anything you'd like to say?
Yes, sir. I just want to say it's an honor and a privilege for y'all to re-nominate me again to be on the tree committee, but see, see against the, y'all nominating me, and I thank y'all very much.
Appreciate you, and your passion does show, and by the grace of God, we can continue to do this, and by God's grace, we'll be here next year doing the same thing and saying some of the same things.
Yes, sir.
But I did read that just this morning.
Yes, sir.
I did not know shrubs was once trees, and you can refurbish them, they can grow and cultivate the soil.
That's right.
So I learned something, so you validated that, too. Thank you all so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it, y'all have a good day, and please be careful. Y'all be careful. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Byss.
Be careful.
Appreciate all that you've done for us over all these years.
Yes.
Guys, thank you for doing what you do for the city now. Thank you very much. Mr. Byss has dedicated his entire adult life.
He has a passion for it.
Right now, has a passion for it.
Amen.
It don't take long, does it?
Tell us about it.
It don't take long.
I think it's just passion and passion.
Like in TV, it's, it don't slow down and wait on you.
It don't slow down and wait on you, that's right.
It does not.
Thank you, and I'm glad.
But thank both of you.
Y'all have a good day, y'all.
Okay, you too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all be careful and have a great day.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Next, at this time, did you get the pictures? Yeah, go ahead. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Counsel, next, I would like to call upon our clerk to read a proclamation recognizing Alabama Farm City Week. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas for over sixty-four years during Thanksgiving week, the American people have observed Farm City Week to express gratitude for the bounty with which God has blessed our land and to recognize the achievements of the farmers, rural townspeople, and city residents who make our nation's agricultural production and distribution system so successful. Truly, this cooperation between rural and city dwellers for mutual benefit helps ensure our country's well-being. And whereas America's farmers have provided food and fiber to sustain our people throughout decade after decade of progress, farmers' productivity has increased steadily, thanks largely to their initiative in supporting and adopting the methods and materials developed by scientific research. Yield per acre has grown tremendously, with the result that American farmers are able not only to meet the nation's basic needs for foodstuffs, but also to produce agricultural goods for export and for a wide variety of specialty markets here in the United States and around the world. And whereas American agriculture and the many service industries that depend upon it in cities and towns and along all the routes in between is a story of extraordinary labor creating extraordinary abundance. At this time of year, it is only fitting that all Americans offer some special sign of thanks to those who grow, harvest, and bring to our nation's tables the fruits of sun, seed, and soil. Now therefore, I, Eddie Low, Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of November the twenty-third through November the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, as Alabama Farm City Week. I call upon all citizens in rural areas and cities alike to join in recognizing the accomplishments of our productive farmers and our urban residents who cooperate to create abundance, wealth, and strength for our nation.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, Jim. Again, this is another person who has a passion for this, and when you have a passion, you're gonna always do a good job, and we appreciate you doing that and helping keeping us accountable with this. But again, on behalf of this council and myself, we truly like to present you with this, we know how important it is for farmers. I think all of us has probably had some dealing with that, or has had some ancestors and relatives who worked for us. So we know how important it is, and that's something that will never change in this country, and thank God for that. But we certainly like to say thank you for your passion, and we certainly look forward to always doing this proclamation. I know we probably won't be able to have the meeting this year, but as Brother Dave said earlier, this two-year pass, and by God's grace, we'll get back on that. But thank you for your passion, and the mic is yours.
Um, I just was gonna say, yes, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna be able to have, which way am I speaking here? I'm not gonna be able to have the Farm City breakfast this year, but we did have a great number of entries in our, in the program for the poster essay and multimedia competition, so we have those winners, and we'll be announcing those next week.
You still will award.
Yes, we're still awarding, and the Farmers Federation is still giving out cash prizes to both teachers and students who've won. But I will say, this year, as we reflect upon being thankful for our food supply, more than any other year in my lifetime, if you remember back in the spring when we had a few tense moments in the grocery store, really, that does bring to mind to be thankful for our secure food supply in America, because that's the only time in my whole life, I think, that I've ever been in the grocery store nervous, right? So anyway, thank y'all so much for this, and we hope to be back next year with our normal situation. Thanks.
Let me ask you this, Jim, you mentioned about being nervous. How is the supply chain, has it picked up as far as?
We never really had a break in the supply chain. I mean, we literally, in America, have the lowest cost, most secure food supply in the whole wide world. Like, compared to every other country, we spend less of our income on food and have a greater quality of food than anyone else. And I have a little lesson I do with kids about that, actually, 'cause it does, when you get used to paying just a little bit, you kind of think, man, this grocery bill's expensive, right? Well, any other country, it's gonna be way more expensive. But our food supply is very secure, our local milk producers, you know, never miss a beat, our local beef producers never miss a beat. We just had a little bit of a hiccup with what the consumers were doing at that moment. So.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Fill in the shells.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Byss.
Have a good day.
Amen.
Okay, proceeding on now, our council, under the city clerk, I would like to ask the council for a motion to approve the October the nineteenth work session, as well as October the twentieth council meeting. It's a pleasure of the council, since we were all there, to take this in one city. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the October nineteenth work session, as well as October the twentieth council meeting.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Day. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Gordon. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Low?
Yes. And now, council, under the city council, at this time, I would like to ask, are there any unfinished business? Proceeding on on the resolutions, and also on the administration? We have resolution number twenty twenty dash two six six to be ratified in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and the city manager to enter into an agreement to hold TUC Construction Incorporated harmless in connection with the installation of a twenty-four-inch sewer line connecting to a thirty-inch line crossing Opelika Road Bridge. Counsel, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion of, well, let me get Mrs. Lee to read it first.
Okay. Whereas the Utilities Department of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama contracted with Aldot to replace the Opelika Road Bridge and relocate utility lines. And whereas the city misidentified the size of the sewer line crossing Opelika Road at the bridge site. And whereas the city wishes to hold TUC Construction Incorporated harmless for any liability that could occur to the twenty-four-inch sewer line connecting on each end to the existing thirty-inch line. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign a release agreement to hold TUC Construction Incorporated harmless in connection with the installation for the twenty-four-inch sewer line connecting to a thirty-inch line crossing Opelika Road Bridge. Passed, approved, and adopted this fourteenth day of October, twenty-twenty, ratified this third day of November, twenty-twenty.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lee. However, council, I would like to ask for a motion that we table this, as we discussed on yesterday in the work session. Our engineering department, utilities are still doing some due diligence, as we heard yesterday, so based on that, I would like to ask for a motion to table this until the next council. May I have a motion?
Motion to table.
All right, motion, Mr. Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Day. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Low?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also proceeding on administration, we have resolution number twenty twenty dash two seven three to be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to enter into an agreement with Robinson Paving Company to perform emergency repair work at the Phoenix City C and D landfill. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City received a notice of violation from the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, AIDM, for certain deficiencies at the landfill. And whereas to avoid further involvement from AIDM, the city must perform the necessary emergency repair work promptly. And whereas the Phoenix City Engineering Department received a proposal from Robinson Paving Company Incorporated to perform said work in an amount not to exceed three hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with Robinson Paving Company Incorporated to perform said landfill work for the above stated amount. Passed, approved, and adopted this twenty-ninth day of October, twenty-twenty, ratified this third day of November, twenty-twenty.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify or approve of this resolution.
Motion to ratify.
Motion by Mr. Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Comments, discussion?
Oh, yes, sir. This is something that I've been working on quite a while, and I know AIDM had got involved. Could we get Angel to evacuate for the citizen of Phoenix City, please?
Angel?
Yes, sir. The City C and D landfill, AIDM has been rarely spending space on the landfill, and over the past couple months, we have had a large amount of rain, and the cover that we have to get over the debris is at least six inches, and some of that cover was eroded due to all the rain that we've had. It filled up our sediment pond and our ditches out there. Those are in the fifth cleanout, but in an effort to get back in front of AIDM, we have got to get the proper coverage and all the erosion rails on the slopes taken care of in a prompt fashion. So this is what this contract with Robinson Paving Company could do for us, is to come out there and actually put the slopes back in where they're supposed to be. Once we get the dirt and everything leveled back out, then we'll put a flex tear of mulch over it, so that will actually stay up on the slopes better if we do have a lot of rain, and we'll get a much better, safe tasting road on that. And this is an emergency, because we got the notice of violation from AIDM. Once we show them that we have a plan and that we're very reliable with that plan, they will work with us, and they give us a thirty-day timeframe to begin with. That's just to make sure that the cities or, you know, media, body, understands that these are important issues to take care of. We've already contacted AIDM, they're aware of what we're doing, they sent, you know, so they took pictures of it, gave us a copy of the resolution, and they'll work with us on the timeframe. And if it is an emergency, that's why we went ahead and get the approval and the sub-eradication. The contractor should be on site tomorrow, so it's something that is rapidly happening, and I do appreciate everyone for getting this, for letting this happen. Thank you.
I think you also said yesterday that you're doing some of it in-house?
Yes, sir. We are doing some of it in-house, so we're working with a fine and cleaning up the ditches in-house. We just don't have the manpower or the type of equipment needed for the center of fire just due to time. Let me take a quick look now.
Angel, just one other question. Yes, this is an emergency thing that has to be repaired. What type of guarantee or warning, warranty did we get from the company on the fix?
We will go through out there, Ms. Johnson, and make sure that, of course, we have to approve it, unless it's all said and done. And normally, they go back and give us a year's warranty, but it has to be no negligence on our part. So I don't know, I mean, they're not gonna take care of it, the mulch is something that was not tied down right properly or anything, but so we would have about a year that we should go back in if there was a negligence on their part that they didn't need to get on there. And I did want to say, too, that this is a large amount of money, but this fix will also go for the actual closing, the initial, or the final cap, is what we call it, for the landfill when we get ready to load it down.
Okay. Thank you, Angel. Any other comments or questions, council?
Uh, yeah, there's no time limit on that. I know we wasn't pleased, the important part in it as well, there's no time, set time for it, for that project to finish?
We have to show Mr. Day that we are actively working on getting these repairs done with AIDM, and they do understand weather limitations, but I mean, it is something that we have to show that we are actively working on it and keep good documentation if we do have rain delays or anything like that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. Thank you. Any other questions or comments or discussion? If not, at this time, we'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Low?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, next council, we have a resolution in reference to approving the final settlement in the matter of a claim filed by Vance Law Firm on behalf of Amanda Spear, Ethel versus Jacob Cook, Joshua Peeler, Peeler, and the City of Phoenix City in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept and approve of the proposed settlement regarding the claim filed by Vance Law Firm on behalf of Amanda Spear versus Jacob Cook, Joshua Peeler, and the City of Phoenix City in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars, and does further authorize payment thereof. Passed, approved, and adopted this third day of November, twenty-twenty.
Okay. Counsel, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Day, may I have a second, counsel?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey? Motion and second, and any comments or discussion, counsel? If not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Low?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, proceeding on, council, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing a hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-four, sixty-four cents from the twenty nineteen dash twenty twenty engineering budget to be carried forward to the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one engineering budget to complete the contract with Neil Schaefer Incorporated for the development of the Phoenix City Public Works Manual. This is a budgeted item. So with that, I'd like to call on the clerk, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Engineering Department has identified a need for a public works manual. And whereas Neil Schaefer Incorporated was awarded a contract for professional services to develop the public works manual for a fee not to exceed two hundred five thousand dollars. And whereas the funds for said contract were budgeted in the Engineering Division twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget. And whereas the project is not complete, and the remaining funds, one hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars sixty-four cent, budgeted in the twenty nineteen twenty twenty for said contract need to be carried forward into the Engineering Division twenty 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 twenty-one budget. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize one hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars sixty-four cent from the twenty nineteen twenty twenty engineering budget to be carried forward to the twenty 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 twenty-one engineering budget to complete the contract with Neil Schaefer Incorporated for the development of the Phoenix City Public Works Manual. Passed, approved, and adopted this third day of November, twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Johnson, may I have a second? Second? Second, Mr. Gordon. Comments, discussion, question?
When will this be possibly finished? Do you, anybody know? Do you know any when this might be done?
Mr. Bailey, we are hoping that in the next couple of months that it will be done. We have done several reviews with Neil Schaefer on each section of it. They're going back and revising, are putting our comments into the document now, and they're also getting, doing the table of contents, and they're trying to make sure that the document flows properly. So we're hoping to get in, I guess, a new draft in the next couple of weeks, and then hopefully in a couple of months, we will have the complete document.
And this will be used to, for the builders and developers and people of that nature to all be on the same page with the city, isn't that kind of where we're trying to head with this?
Yes, sir, and it's going to include, you know, everything from utilities, so any of our railway utilities, or, you know, companies that come in and do work there, like Spire, their companies will have, you know, details for them, it will have anything for subdivision regulations, so it will try to keep, like you said, put everybody on the same page. They're all gonna go by the same rules, the city's gonna use this, Spire Public Works Manual also, so, you know, we're trying to get everything consistent, so it will be much easier for everybody in the long run to understand our processes.
So also, it's gonna be on the city website as well, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So nobody will have no excuse to build a, okay?
Well, even the citizens can look at this, if they come up there wanting to do an addition to their home, and they need to know how to start and where to start, and, you know, what might be involved, I mean, they can, like Mr. Day said, they can go online and look it up, they can come down, they can ask, and then when the contractor shows up and anybody that shows up, they all know, expect what each one of them is gonna ask and what the answer's gonna be, these questions, 'cause it's gonna be consistent.
Well, it's not.
So that makes, that's what makes it the best idea, in my opinion, of, you know, how cities had a long time to get everybody on the same page.
Let's stop, son.
So I thank y'all for working so hard.
And I mean, they're still gonna have to go by the building code, that would be through the building department, but anything for like side work or anything like that, you know, they would be able to go to this manual and look, and then it would direct them for the actual building construction to go to the building department and go through the building code that we have adopted.
Right. They just make it simple for everybody and everybody's on the same page. Even people that don't work with the city, everybody, the city's going to be on the same page. And that means a great deal.
Let me ask you this then, Angel. All this money that we are putting into this project, let's say about eight, nine years from today, and the state decides to change some type of code, something in there, would that affect that management?
Should be easier to fix.
Yeah, just a minute.
Should be easier to fix.
We would just have to amend the manual, Mr. Day. But we would have the capability to where we wouldn't have to go out and get an entirely new manual made. It would just be an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comment, discussion, counsel? That's a good idea, that's a great idea. Make it easy, one stop shop. If not, any other comments, questions or discussion? Counsel, at this time, I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, counsel. There's a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign a lease agreement with Quadrant for two I X dash five H five mailing system for a monthly fee of a hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents per machine of the Finance and Police Department. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Finance Department and Police Department need to replace the current postage machines. And whereas the city has received quotes from Quadrant formerly known as Mail Finance for two I X five H F mailing systems for a monthly rental fee of one twenty-six, one hundred twenty-six dollars, ninety-eight cent per machine for a five-year term billed quarterly. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor and city manager to sign a lease agreement with Quadrant for lease of the I X F, I X five H F mailing systems in the amount of one hundred twenty-six dollars, ninety-eight cent monthly per machine for sixteen months. Passed, approved and adopted this third day of November, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, counsel. Uh, each of us have heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Comments or discussion? Okay, there might be any? Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, Mayor, let me ask you this. I didn't know they, uh, specified by two departments would be using this machine. No other department can use that machine in the city?
According to this, it's just for those two. And they, the other departments probably already have something.
Oh, they already have, yes.
We need to just replace it, something it looks like that I've already worn out and not worked on and fixed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Day. Any other questions or comment? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on, counsel. We have a resolution in reference to declare acquired property located at twenty-one thirteen Walker Court, parcel number forty-three dash fourteen dash zero eight dash thirty-three dash zero dash zero 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 dash one zero one point zero 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 as surplus to be sold through a closed bid auction to the highest bidder. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City has acquired property located at twenty-one thirteen Walker Court, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six seven, parcel number forty-three dash fourteen dash oh eight dash thirty-three dash zero dash zero 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 dash one zero one point zero zero zero. And whereas this property is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the described property is hereby declared surplus and to be sold through a closed bid auction to the highest bidder or through whatever means deemed acceptable if no one should meet the minimum bid requirement as successfully purchases the said property. Passed, approved and adopted this third day of November, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, thank you so very much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we have all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. Comments, discussion, counsel?
Just a quick question. I know this is going to be the property up there where we had the issues in Saddle Brook. Is it going to be any limitation, is the property, they can build a home again on it? Or has it got to be used for something else in the neighborhood? Or how, is there any limitations to it other than, I mean, residential? Which, I'm assuming it's still going to be a residential piece of property that you can rebuild another home on? Just maybe it's smaller than what it originally was.
So, so Mayor, counsel, this is Sean. My expectations are for him to be able to build a house on it. Angel, I think you may, can you address that more specifically?
Yes, sir. We, when we made these repairs, we took into consideration that we wanted to be able to sell the lot to build a house on it. And you are able to do that. We do have some easements that will be along that, uh, storage ground height there. But it's still plenty enough room to build a house on it that also meets the, uh, square footage covenant, or square footage requirements by the, uh, subsidy.
Okay. That was my question. That's what I wanted to make sure. Like you said, easements and all, I know it's got to be there because of what we had to do to make that lot workable. But I'm just glad to see that, you know, it, it goes back to what it originally was where the homeowners in that neighborhood can now realize that we didn't, you know, intentionally try to disrupt their neighborhood for whatever reason. They would, we took it apart to put it back together. Now they let it go back to what it should be in all of them.
May I speak to that just for a moment? Uh, the Engineering Department did a wonderful job designing the fix there so that the, uh, a house could be placed on there. Be a little limitations. It'll have to kind of be an L-shaped house, but it would fit in with other houses in the neighborhood. And of course, we wanted it to be suitable for our one single-family residence because that helps the entire neighborhood.
That's my point, right.
The fix that is there, and in fact, I have had an individual in that neighborhood contact me already about how he could purchase the lot because he has a relative that wants to move up there. And I told him it was going to a, a bid, uh, situation. And he would, he could bid on it and do that sort of thing. But, but I, I just want to say that the city took that lot, which was in pretty bad condition, and made it really pristine. It is, it is really a nice looking lot now. So just wanted to let y'all know that. I, I know because I was involved in the litigation.
And that was the point I was trying to make is, uh, city, especially the Engineering Department, worked real hard in trying to take a situation that, you know, we were getting a lot of flat from them. And, uh, just basically start from scratch, redid the thing two or three times to get it to what we have today. And then wound up with a, a sellable lot that, like you said, that they'd be a house on again, you know, in twenty years from now, when, you know, all of us are no longer here, a lot of the people that, you know, live up there now living. Twenty years from now, the people won't realize that there was ever an issue with that lot or there was an issue on that street. So I just commend, uh, you know, everybody at the city for working so hard and the, and our attorneys that got with everybody was able to work all this out. You know, just glad to see it finally come to full circle up there where we did have to take something apart, but it'll be put back together, in my opinion, even better than it was to start with. So I think we all come out ahead on this.
I was going to say hats off to Leroy and Public Works because they did a wonderful job dressing that lot up.
Oh, yeah. It looks good and I, I've had very few complaints on it. Griffin may have had some, but I directed some people towards him, but...
There's nothing to it, I mean. There's nothing to it, isn't there?
So in other way, we will recruit, uh, most of our money back that we get involved in.
We'll, we'll get a lot of the repair money back.
Right.
We'll get all the money back. We'll get a lot of the repair money back.
But when they, when they build a house, we, we'll get a little bit more tax revenue.
Oh, every time there's a rooftop, it's a good thing.
But the biggest thing that we're going to gain is it gets, the situation gets closed out.
That's right. And the people in that neighborhood...
And the people in the neighborhood can see what, what it is.
Just perfect.
And that's what I want them to be comfortable up there. I want them to understand that, you know, we, all this was done, we're trying to fix the problem. But yet with all of them in mind too, that have their investments in that neighborhood. And, you know, when you have your home, that's your biggest investment you're going to have. And, and so they certainly had a lot of, you know, legitimate reasons to be concerned. But I want them to realize that their concerns, uh, you know, can be put at ease.
Well, the last thing I'd like to say is this is the problem that was created.
Oh, way before.
It's a long for university.
Way before.
Thank you, thank you.
This is twenty, twenty-five years ago.
Exactly, exactly.
I, I was there. I know I heard talk of this piece probably when I first came on council. It was, it was done wrong right there. And that was approximately eight years ago.
Right. Oh, yeah, this goes back twenty, twenty-five years ago.
That's when we started talking about it. And it's another example of why the regulations that are in place now are so important. They're going to follow them. Anyway, that's all I want to say about that because I've seen a lot of it.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you all. Any other? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, counsel on administration. Is, we have a resolution in reference to approving the final settlement in the matter of a claim filed by Griffin Sykes Junior on behalf of Michael Elias Ruda versus Tobias Bo- Boisbert?
Bo Bear.
Bo Bear?
Yes.
Okay. In the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept and approve of the proposed settlement regarding the lawsuit filed by Griffin Sykes Junior on behalf of Michael Elias Ruda versus Tobias Bo Bear, Et Al three dash one nine dash C B dash two three two, Middle District, Alabama, in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars and does further authorize payment thereof. Passed, approved and adopted this third day of November, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard this, uh, resolution. At this time, I'd like to, uh, ask for a motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Day, and second, uh, Mr. Gordon. Okay. Counsel, I think it wouldn't be remiss if we asked our attorney here to say a few words on behalf of this.
I'd be glad to speak to this. This was a lawsuit filed in the U S District Court. Uh, it was, uh, it's a lawsuit about excessive force involving the arrest of, uh, Mr. Ruda. It was a case that, uh, uh, in the environment we're in now, we felt like it'd be best, could be settled. The reason for the amount is that this particular type of case also involves the award of attorney's fees if we were to, uh, have an adverse outcome. Uh, we felt like our officers were in the right, but, uh, the judge sort of disagreed with us on some motions we filed. And so we felt it was in the best interest to settle the case, uh, and recommend this amount. And we still recommend this amount to the council.
Okay, any questions? I'm glad to ask.
Well, the biggest thing I think you just said in your answer, what I was going to reiterate from yesterday, is that I, we had no police officers found in fault doing anything wrong.
No, we did not.
We just felt like that this didn't need to go before a jury with today's environment because you don't have any idea how people are going to accept something. But I just want to make sure that everybody understood our police department and the police officers reacted the way they have to react, which is instantaneously. They have to make a judgment immediately. And there was a couple of them, uh, in what we saw yesterday that came up at the tail end, kind of. That's where this started. And they really had no idea what was going on until they got there and assessed. And they have to make that assessment. And that's police officers all over the whole world, all over the whole United States. They have to make an assessment immediately. They don't have the vision to look backwards or to look ahead or to see what was happening around the corner before they got there. It's a hard job for them to have to do. And they put themselves on the line to do these things and make these judgments. So, uh, I just want our police department to realize that, you know, we, we endorse them, we embrace them, and that we realize how hard they work. And it's not just police officers, but to me, they have the most dangerous, you know, the thing they have to get out there because they don't know what kind of situation they're walking in. Like you said yesterday, when he, this gentleman reaching in back of that truck, you have no idea what he's reaching for. He could have been trying to hold on to the truck, like you said. There's no way to know. I reach up under here, you got no idea knowing what I'm reaching for standing on that side.
Exactly.
And, uh, so I, I commend that our police department did everything they should have done. They did everything that they could have done. And I commend y'all for, you know, just putting it behind everybody. Uh, I couldn't have said it better myself. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Steve.
At this time, counsel, I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Upstanding.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Proceeding on, counsel. On the Parks and Recreation Department. We have a resolution in reference to declare various personal items as listed on Exhibit Eight as surplus to be sold as scrap or destroyed at the city landfill. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama Public Rec, uh, uh, excuse me, Alabama Parks and Recreation Department has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of personal property no longer needed for the City of Phoenix City. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the described property is listed on the attached sheet labeled Exhibits Eight is hereby declared surplus to be sold as scrap or destroyed at the city landfill if no one purchased it or uses it. Passed, approved and adopted this third day of November, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Day. Comments, discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, proceeding on the Police Department. Counsel, we have a resolution in reference to declaring eight black office chairs with arms as surplus to be disposed of at the city landfill. to be disposed of at the city landfill. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Police Department of the City of Phoenix City has several items which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following described property is hereby declared surplus for disposal at the city landfill. Eight office chairs with arms, black and color. Passed, approved and adopted this third day of November twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Day. Comments or discussion? Okay, at this time, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Proceeding on, counsel, on the license application. This is a second reading. It's an application for an off-premise beer license, an off-premise wine license submitted by Arakashan G. Patel, the Harriet Air LLC, doing business as Sonoco Food Market located at thirty-eight fifty-eight C, Highway eighty west, Phoenix City, Alabama. The first reading, counsel, was held on the October the twentieth. I would not ask the clerk to reread this, however, I would like to ask for a motion for the approval of this license application. May I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Day, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Gordy. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on, counsel, we have a first reading. It's an application for an off, for an on-premise beer license, an on-premise wine license, off-premise beer license, off-premise wine license submitted by High Corning of Sticks and Stones LLC, doing business as the Castle Hoff, H O F, located at five oh two Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, Phoenix City, Alabama. At this time, I would like to call upon the clerk for the first reading of this license application. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Our first memo is from the police chief. I have reviewed these applications for on and off premise beer and on and off premise wine licenses, and I have no objection to the issuance of these licenses to the applicant based upon her criminal background investigation. The second memo is from fire chief. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by High Corning of Sticks and Stones LLC, doing business as the Castle Hoff, located at five oh two Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, Phoenix City, Alabama. She has applied for on and off premise beer and on and off premise wine licenses. An inspection for life safety and fire code compliance was conducted on October the fifteenth, twenty twenty. This facility meets the fire code requirements for this type of occupancy. Our next memo is from Deputy Building Official. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by High Corning of Sticks and Stones LLC, doing business as the Castle Hoff, located at five oh two Martin Luther King Junior Parkway for on-premise beer, on-premise wine, off-premise beer and off-premise wine licenses. This facility meets the building code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of these licenses.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we have heard the first reading, and at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on second reading. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
First reading, to place on first reading.
Motion there.
Motion to approve, place on first reading. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Johnson, who's the second by?
Oh, Mr. Day.
Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy. At this time, I'd like to call on our attorney, Mr. McCool.
Yes, we have two claims. The first one is Rebecca McGuire. And it's a, it's a, this gentleman took a claim, we had some people cutting grass when we either hit a rock and broke a window in the side of Miss McGuire's van. There are three estimates, one fifty, one fifty-nine, and three fifty-five. We recommend approval of the claim in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars so that she can get one fixed.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. It's time like to ask for a motion to approve that recommendation.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Day. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCool?
The next one is a kind of an unfortunate situation. This gentleman named Guy Hammons, who's made a claim about a tree limb that fell and not being a part of the chain link fence. We recommend this claim not be approved. The city, the tree was on city property, but the city had no prior notice of the condition of the tree, which apparently it had died. And I guess there was some wind or it rotted and the limb fell on it. The law is unless we have prior notice, we don't, we're not liable for that. Now, if he called and let us know we had a dead tree, we could have gone and cut it down. The tree has since been cut down, so if there are any further problems with it, we recommend it be denied at this time.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve our attorney's recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Day, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Gordy. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Counsel, anything anyone like to say?
Well, we, attorney? I just wanna say it's a pleasure to be back behind this table, desk, whatever you wanna call it, with everybody again. Look forward to four more years of working together. I think we really did a good job. I really believe that. I believe that the people of Phoenix City recognize how hard we work and that we really try to do it as a unit, and we try to do it for the whole city, not just certain parts of the city, not for certain people in the city. We do it citywide. Look forward to trying to finish up some things that we got started. Continue with the day-to-day running of the city. The biggest thing is I'm just blessed and thankful that all the citizens have enough confidence in all of us to put us back behind here for one more time. I do thank all the citizens for that. We appreciate them for their confidence in each one of us, not just in ourselves. And just to let y'all know that we can finish up some things that we got started and leave some things for, you know, the next group that comes behind us to do. And they'll always remember that. But I just appreciate all of our city employees working so hard. And I know some of these meetings, we don't mention everybody, we just mention some of the departments. And it's not that the departments work any harder than any other department. It's just what some of them do comes forth to the, you know, to the public more so than what other departments do within our city. But all of our city departments work mighty hard and have some real good employees and good people. So I think each and every one of them from the department heads all the way down to the, to the last person hiring. That's, that's all.
Yeah, I just have just a couple of things I made. Like our attorney stated, it is an unfortunate situation when we have claims that come before us. And with the tree falling on properties and damaging and having the citizens to reap the bill. And we, we, I, let me just speak for myself. I know that there is a lot of overgrown areas in District Two, because I've, I've seen them. And I know there are several people that have encountered the same situation. And I would just ask our citizens, if you know of a tree that may not, may have some disease and, you know, go ahead and find out who owns the property. Go ahead and find out any information you can about trying to have that tree removed, because at some point, it may become potential damage and liability to someone who cannot support the claim. So again, this was an unfortunate situation, and I empathize with the gentleman that filed the claim. But I'm here to do the best job that I can is, as a council member, is to look into the recommendation that our attorney has made, and I vote according to that. Another thing on yesterday, I didn't have a chance to thank one of the most important persons in my life. And I got kinda noted for it yesterday when I got home. My dad came to see me get sworn in, and I did not recognize him. And I told him I have to make it up today. So I wanna thank my dad for coming and my sister as well. Those are, she is one of my biggest supporters, and I love them, and I thank them for supporting me. And as we know, November the third is one of the most important days of the year right now, and this is our voting day. So I want to, you know, encourage everyone, all of our registered voters, to go out and vote. We got, I think, according to Judge Harton, seventeen, eighteen polls throughout the county. So find your polling location and cast your ballot. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you to the council, thank you.
Yeah, just got a couple of things, Mayor. First of all, I wanna thank the citizens of District Three for getting me the opportunity to serve once again another four-year term. I'm very honored and proud to do that. I want to say to the citizens of District Three, thank you for giving me that opportunity. And also, I wanted to say to this council and the city of Phoenix as well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve as Mayor Protown for the last four years. It was, it was an experience for me, and I enjoyed it. As the mayor often say, we work as a team, and this is what we gotta do to be able to move the city forward. Gotta work as a team. Also, I wanna thank the City of Phoenix City for allowing me to serve eight years under Leroy's council government. I know it's not in direct city business, but this has been my eighth year on that, and I've only missed one meeting out of the eight years. Matter of fact, we have a meeting Thursday. And also, serve on the Association of County Council Government, especially State of Alabama. And this is my second year serving on that particular board. And I just wanna say, I'm very proud to have these opportunities, serve on these different boards that I have done already in the past. I love Phoenix City, and as I said in the past, I wanted to meet that I was in, I've been. These four years, I mean, these eight years and the years that I served on different boards, a total of twenty years that I have been involved here in Phoenix City. And my final remarks to our citizens here in Phoenix City as I drive, go throughout the city here. We're gonna ask our citizens, be mindful, not throw out trash in our city and our area over there. As I looked in District Three and elsewhere throughout the city, it just bothered me to see all that trash and paper, you know, outside. I was, as I stated to Mr. Hunter a while back, I was behind a young man, he pulled up to a stop sign, and he just threw out a whole bunch of Burger King bags right there over the sidewalk. I shook my head. I told my wife I need to get out there and pick that up. She's saying, oh, you know, but that's, this, I say this to all our citizens here. This is your city, this is your town, this is your tax dollar. Please, Mayor, please, let's get involved, you know, let's keep our city clean. Let's come to our meeting, and as you know, we start up this new year here, this new four-year term. Let's get involved, come to the meeting, find out what is going on. You spend your tax dollars, so just come to the meeting, find out what's going on. Don't get secondhand information. Thank you for that, Mayor, and so I have.
Yeah, I just wanna say real quick, thank you, you know, to the citizens again for allowing me the opportunity to serve this great city, and to you guys, I'm looking forward to it. You know, I love the team that we have and camaraderie we have and the unity we have, whether we agree or disagree. And I think that's something that's extremely important in this day and time. So I'm just looking forward to the next four years with you all. To our citizens, be safe out there today. It is crazy out there. I've gone through, passed a couple of polling places, and it's busy. So that's a great thing. It's a great thing to see people are out, but be safe, be patient, and be respectful of one another. And just know that we're out, you know, we live in the greatest country in the world. We have the opportunity to get out and voice our opinion. And so I just am thankful for that, but be respectful of others. Knowing when we wake up tomorrow, some people are gonna be happy about the election, some people are not. But we all still live together, and we just need to love one another and care for one another and just move forward in positivity from here going forward.
I thank each of the council for speaking from the heart, which we, which we do. And I'm so happy and grateful that, you know, we're all back again for another four-year term. Because it creates continuity, it creates, should create a belief in this community that we have people who are willing to do it. It has done it, and will continue to do it for the right reason. And I am very, very grateful for that. And we should all be grateful of that, because we are in this thing for the right reason, and I am so grateful that we're all back here again, only by the grace of God that we are, but it's for a purpose. And that purpose, as I've challenged each of the council members on yesterday, we will continue to do things for the right reason. One of the things that we've all been able to hang our hats on for this city and for this team is that the consistencies that we have created in doing things right and decent and in order. But also being a team of a family that care about each other, that we can talk about each other, but you're not in this family, and you can't do that. You can't, we won't let you cross that line. And that is a very positive thing, because we do push each other. But I'm grateful, I am so grateful that this community has accepted us, and we are grateful to be able to serve this community. And I just wanna ask people in this community, please keep us accountable, because the best ability is accountability. And if we fumble, we can admit that, learn from it, and try not to fumble again. But I promise you this, you're gonna always get the truth, and you're gonna get it transparently, and that's what we're gonna continue to hang our hats on for those consistencies. So again, thanks to all our citizens, thanks to this council. Chief, you got something you wanna say?
Yes, sir. On behalf of the city manager, I'm sitting here for him today, he's taking so much needed time off. But from the city manager's perspective and also from the department heads, we also thank you for what you've done in the past four years. We look forward to another successful four years. We'll keep those projects rolling, and we'll keep you informed and make you have the most information possible to make the best decisions possible for our citizens moving forward. Something else that the city manager, even though he's not here, he communicated to me that he's gotten several calls about the polling places also with Griffin brought up. Just so you know, the city doesn't run the elections this time. This is a federal election, so if any complaints or concerns, you need to direct those to the probate judge's office. Polls in Alabama are open from seven to seven. I know that there were some people complaining that some of the polls were not open at seven. You have to understand that this is, you know, at Eastern Central Time Zone. All of our polls obviously are in a Central Time Zone, so they should have been open from seven to seven Eastern. But that's, again, it's a question for the probate judge, they're the ones that run these elections. But we look, you know, certainly make sure that you communicate with that office, because they're the ones that control when those polls close. I would suspect that they should close at seven, but again, if you have any questions about that, please direct that to the probate judge. The city has no control of those city elections. But we do appreciate any calls. We'll try to keep those communication lines open between us and the county to help anybody get to the polling seats too. We certainly want them to make sure that we support their right to vote. We're gonna do everything we can to keep everything open and moving and directing traffic. And we, it's gonna be an historic election, I think, and I'm looking forward to it as well. I'm like driving into town, I saw people already lined up around the several polling locations. So be patient, certainly we'll be out there and force to help the sheriff with that, but this will be the sheriff and probate judge's election.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
When you mentioned the two locations, that the two new locations, I know one, Fifth Street South Complex, and the other one up there is.
Right. And one, Martin Center, was the old location, the new one is the I Lausanne is right next door. So again, we've got people in that area directing folks to the right location if we can get the word out enough. The other one is on, used to be at the C A C, or the E M A, now it's our special reg. Now at, this location now.
Fifth Street South.
Fifth Street South, right, Fifth Street South. Again, we'll keep, we'll keep people in those areas, so if people do show up in the wrong location, we'll try to give them a spot. But we've got plenty of time, it's still early, we've got a long day ahead of us, so we look forward to making sure everybody gets that chance to vote.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Don't wait in line, keep going, vote. Stand in line.
Best country in the world.
Make sure you vote.
It's a privilege.
If you don't vote, don't complain. It's just that simple.
That's that simple.
If you won't take time to vote, don't have no opinion of what, who, right or wrong, or who won or who lost. You didn't earn that right. Go stand in line and vote. It's too simple to do.
I wanna thank this council again so much. We are a team, as you've heard, and, you know, on teams, you don't always agree, but at the end of the day, you still love each other, and you look, you put the team before yourself sacrificially.